I'll call this meeting of the Johnson City Commission to order for Thursday, May the 20th, 2021. With the call to order, we'll invite Pastor Pete Tackett to lead us in our invocation. If you'll all please stand.
Thank you, Mayor. As we pray, let me share with you that there are a coalition of pastors and church leaders that pray for you all by name every Monday morning, and so I'm just joining in the chorus of doing that. So let me pray for you. Thank you, Father, for a great city to live in, led by people who work diligently to make it a better place to live. I pray, Father, for the momentous decisions before them, and these days they wrestle with the issues of how to face equality issues and racial issues and education issues. And now they're looking for a new city manager. Lord, all of these decisions will have long-term effects on our city. So we pray for, according to James One, great wisdom. He would give it to them liberally, that they would make decisions that would make Johnson City the place people would want to be a part of for many years to come. Give them clarity tonight on the decisions they will make, and watch over them as they lead us ahead, I pray, in Christ's name. Amen.
You'll face the flag. We'll say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on our agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from May the 6th. Are there any modifications or a motion to approve, move for approval?
A second.
Motion and a second. If there's not objection, we'll call the roll.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Mayor, next item is presentation of proclamations, resolutions, and presentations. We have a presentation of a retirement resolution honoring our longtime Freedom Hall Civic Center employee and current director, Bobby Hyder Shirley. And before I ask Bobby to come up here, because she is a 46-year employee, which is really very rare. I'm not aware of my 38-year career affiliation with Johnson City, we've ever had a 46-year employee to this point in time.
She was seven when she started.
That's what she told me. She told me that. And but in honor of her retirement, we do have a special presentation before we ask the mayor to come down. So if we can do that, JT, we appreciate that. A little presentation.
My name is Bobby Hyder Shirley. I have worked at Freedom Hall for over 45 years, and currently I am the interim general manager. Well, I just got out of high school, and the guy that I was dating at the time, his cousin worked here, and they were looking for somebody to work in the swimming pool. And so I applied for the position and got it. A couple of ladies moved away going to college. They needed somebody to work in the ticket office, and so I moved to the ticket office that fall. It's just something that once you get into the business, it kind of grabs a hold of you, and don't let go. Since working here, I have seen probably over 2,000 shows here. Bob Hope was the first one in the building. We had Mountain Concert. We've had Elvis. We've had Vince Gill. We've had Kenny Rogers, Waylon Jennings, ZZ Top, Kenny Loggins, Aerosmith, Conway and Loretta, Harlem Globetrotters, Sesame Street Live, Disney Live, Disney on Ice. The list goes on and on. It's definitely an adrenaline rush, you know, seeing these shows come in here. And each artist, each show that came in, something different. You had different people that you worked with. And, you know, a lot of people think that a show comes in here one day. It does come here one day. But we may have been working on that show and getting ready for that show for six months. I've always been a collector of, ever since I was little, I enjoy collecting things. And working here, you know, I'm fascinated with the show memorabilia that people give out, you know, backstage passes, tickets, photos with some of the artists, just photos of the artists, drumsticks, guitar picks, buttons from the shows, shot glasses, and anything else that the show has that they sell. I usually try to buy something from every event that we have in the building. When bands started, they only had little small bars and stuff to play in when they were touring. And back in the 70s, the bands had to tour to make names for themselves. And so Freedom Hall, the location of Freedom Hall, being close to the interstate, we had almost every major tour that was out on the road. Our, one of our marketing strategies back then, in one of our books, it was almost that if you didn't play Freedom Hall, you were left out. It has been a pleasure working here, and working with the people of the city, the school, the media, everybody involved. There's a lot of people that go into making a show happen. So it has been a real pleasure
Bobby, we'd like to call you up here to receive a retirement resolution for the mayor on behalf of the entire city commission.
Whereas lifelong Johnson City resident Bobby Shirley was first employed at Freedom Hall Civic Center at the grand opening of the building in July 5th, 1974, and began a continuing career of service to the community following her graduation from Science Hill High School the next year. And whereas Bobby Shirley has demonstrated her loyalty and commitment to the citizens of this community, working with a cross-section of community groups, civic organizations, businesses, event promoters, and managers over the year to bring over 2,000 shows and events to the greater Johnson City community, including but not limited to Bob Hope, Elvis Presley, Bruce Springsteen, Aerosmith, Reba McEntire, Sesame Street Live, Elton John, Disney on Ice, Harlem Globetrotters basketball, and many more. And whereas Bobby Shirley's outgoing personality, knowledge, and dedication has made her the go-to person for Freedom Hall for 46 years, as she has performed a variety of duties, including usher, lifeguard, concessions worker, box office clerk, administrative secretary, box office manager, and most recently as the Civic Center Director. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city, by the Johnson City Board of Commissioners to officially honor and congratulate Bobby Hyder Shirley upon her retirement as Civic Center Director after a 46-year career of outstanding service to the city of Johnson City and its citizens and the community. Thank you.
We have something else for you here, too, at the special presentation. If you would hold this mic, please, and I'll see if I can get this out. This is from the State of Tennessee, State Capitol, by Bill Lee, Governor. By virtue of the authority vested in him, he thereby confers upon Bobby Hyder Shirley the certificate of appreciation and recognition of outstanding service in the best interest and the highest traditions of the state of Tennessee this 20th day of May 2021. So we certainly present this to you on behalf of the governor with our appreciation, and we thank you so much for everything you've done. We'll miss her for sure. She's been great. I know that. She's a tremendous asset.
Bobby, don't leave yet. We've got some words behind you here, for sure. First of all, I just want to give you a personal word of thanks. Freedom Hall will not be the same without you. I mean, I've always known, since I've known you, that if you wanted any information about Freedom Hall, the history of Freedom Hall, you're the person who has it all. And when I saw some of the acts that have been there, I hope you record, just take a little tape recorder, and talk about what it was like when Elvis Presley came to Freedom Hall and the memories that you have of that, because that's just institutional knowledge that we need to have. And I know your memories are long, and you'll think about these things as you need to bring a little joy in your life from time to time. But thank you so much, and best wishes on your retirement.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. I also want to say, it's not just shows that were there. We have done mass physicals for high school and middle school kids for years. Sometimes 1,200, 1,400 kids would come through there. And she helped us set this thing up and run those kids through. And in one day, we would do all of those physicals with our people at the Freedom Hall, helping us set up tables. And, I mean, it was an incredible amount of stuff that went into it. And then she was just perfect, just so easy to work with and make it that way. So we're going to miss that. Thank you so much. All right? Thank you very much.
Mayor Wise is going to present two proclamations. We'll take it slightly out of order on the agenda. One is a statehood day for Johnson City, in Johnson City, Tennessee. And the other one will be a proclamation recognizing May 16th to 22nd as Emergency Services Week in Johnson City. So Mayor Wise?
All right. I'll read the first. Whereas on June 1st, 1796, Tennessee was admitted to the Union as the 16th state of the United States. And whereas all across Tennessee, June 1 is celebrated as statehood day with historical sites and museums participating in and offering events to educate the public about our state's history. And whereas our region of northeast Tennessee played an important and influential role in the years leading up to statehood, with Washington County formed in 1777, come on, Chad, as the first state in the region, and what would become the first county in the state. And whereas the seat of Washington County, the town of Jonesboro, was the first town and the location of which Tennessee's state sale was created by William and Matthew Atkinson. And whereas the state flag of Tennessee was designed by Colonel Leroy Reeves, a Johnson City native in 1905. And whereas local frontiersman, military leader, and politician John Sevier was chosen as first governor of the newly formed state of Tennessee from 1795 to 1801, and again, 1803 to 1809. And whereas June 1, 2021, will be Tennessee's 225th anniversary of statehood, which will be celebrated across the region with plans, events culminating on the evening of June 1 in Jonesboro. Now I therefore, I'm sorry, now, therefore I, Joe Wise, Mayor of Johnson City, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim June 1, 2021, as statehood day. Chad, thank you, sir. I'll offer that to you. If you want to say any comments about the program, y'all have plans.
Our program is on Monday, May 31st. It got moved because the governor's coming to town on June 1st. Our event will be on Monday, May 31st at 6:00 PM at Mill Springs Park. It's a culmination of several organizations putting together a group. We're going to be honoring all the people that you mentioned, as well as County Historian Judge John Keener will be speaking about statehood in Tennessee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, this is Emergency Medical Services Week. If we have anyone, yes? Thank you, sir. Come on up. All right. Whereas Washington County Johnson City Emergency Medical Services is a jointly owned and operated emergency service for all citizens in Washington County and Johnson City's area. And whereas Emergency Medical Services provide vital health services to all sick and injured citizens 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and also provide transportation to these victims. And whereas EMS provides timely, efficient, and appropriate medical care, which is one of the most significant factors in determining a patient's outcome for many medical issues. And whereas both full-time and volunteer personnel serve through EMS, including paramedics, emergency medical technicians, and rescue specialists, who serve all emergencies, medical and rescue needs, and have already answered over 10,000 calls for service in our area since January 2021. And whereas Emergency Medical Services personnel devote countless hours to their training, practice, response, and emergency services, and are proud of their commitment to the health and safety of their fellow citizens. And whereas Emergency Medical Services remain on the front line of emergencies, adopting further protective procedures in the face of the COVID-19 crisis, while still responding to everyday emergencies and providing excellence in pre-hospital emergency and non-emergency care. Now therefore, I, Joe Wise, Mayor of the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, in cooperation with the National Observance and the National Association of Emergency Medical Technicians, do hereby proclaim May 16 through 22 as Emergency Medical Services Week. And I thank you, sir. I will say, as a part of serving on the commission, I've had the opportunity on more than one occasion to participate in a recognition that's done with EMS and our other first responders to recognize lifesavers. And it's a really moving experience to get together with the paramedics, and the police, and firefighters who are being recognized, and very often with the person whose life was saved in the room and their family. We have a wonderful group of professionals in that department and in our fire and police service, and you see the real results of that when you meet people who would otherwise not be with us today. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation of an Employee Scholarship Committee. And I'll ask the mayor as well to greet these folks. Let me just say that since 1994, the City of Johnson City Employee Scholarship Program has awarded 203 scholarships, totaling more than $170,000. And this year, the Employee Scholarship Committee has approved four scholarships in an amount of 750 each to each of the following students. Grace Duncan, daughter of Jason Duncan, Watersuit Services. Chloe Hollifield, daughter of Missy Hollifield, Parks Recreation. Melanie James, daughter of Detective Joe James, Police Department. Joshua Luke Jenkins, son of Officer Brett Jenkins, Police Department. Also, we have the $500 John W. Campbell Scholarship funded by former city manager Campbell in honor of his father, and given to a college student currently enrolled at ETSU or Northeast State. And this will be awarded to Heather Shipley, daughter of David Shipley, Watersuit Services. And just as a point of note, all these funds are not taxpayer dollars. These are contributions made possible by city employees on behalf of the scholarship program. And the one reference to Mr. Campbell in supporting the Campbell Scholarship in honor of his father. But we have, I think, some recipients here, Mayor. And if you can come down and greet them, that'd be great.
Oh, I thought we, no, I don't think we did. We have them on the screen.
Excuse me.
So the John W. Campbell Scholarship, Heather Shipley, she's going to ETSU to major in psychology, with an objective to be a behavioral analyst with a criminology focus. Grace Duncan is planning to go to ETSU with an undecided major. That's the best one, because leaves things open. You're going to change it anyway. Chloe Hollifield, also, she's going to Tennessee Tech with an intent to study business management. Melanie James is planning to go to Northeast State Community College to major in criminal justice. Joshua Luke Jenkins is going to Middle Tennessee State University with an intent to major in aerospace professional piloting. And that, I think, comes to the close of our list. So congratulations to their families and to those students.
Next item is we have a recognition of interim Fire Chief David Bell and District Chief Jonathan Fulmer for their recent graduation from the Executive's Fire Officer Program. And this program is a very intensive program over the course of a four-year work effort. And it's a nationally recognized program designed to provide senior fire officers with a broad perspective on a variety of topics and challenges related to fire administration. In addition to the coursework completing over a four-year period, all participants are required to complete multiple applied research projects and demonstrate application of course theory and concepts. And interim Fire Chief Bell and District Chief Fulmer has, and all along with other four members in the state of Tennessee, have graduated from the Executive Fire Officer Program, and a fifth member is due to graduate next year. So there's been 1,500 graduates in total from the Fire Officer Program in the state, and only 50 are from the state of Tennessee. So Mayor, on behalf of the city, ask you to present Chief Bell and District Chief Fulmer their certificates.
Mr. Chief Fulmer, is that bad to you? There we go. Try not to drop it. Want to congratulate both of you and appreciate your service. And I'll give you an opportunity to make any remarks you might wish.
I'd like to thank the city and the commissioners and the fire department as well for giving me the opportunity to go to this program. I know it's helped me now, and I know it's going to help me in the future. So I appreciate all the contributions and your willingness to send me to this program. So thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, it's truly an honor to be able to go to this program for our fire department, for our city, and for our citizens. This allows us the opportunity to be able to meet people from different departments from all over the country and learn about what processes they do to help us create a better place for us to work and live and provide a better service for our citizens. And truly appreciate the support. As Jonathan had said, we couldn't have done this without the support of the city and all of our employees with us. So thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Mayor Commissioners, the next item is special events, street closures. We have a street closure request for the Fridays after 5 presented by the Johnson City Development Authority. And the JCDAs has requested soft closures of King Street and Millard Street from 2:30 PM to 10:00 PM on Friday, June 4th, June 11th, June 18th, June 25th, and July 9th, 16th, 23rd, and 30th, August 6th, August 27th, September 3rd, 1724, for their Friday, every Friday after 5 music series. We have a special events committee, and I'm saying this because we had this committee very active in 2019, and obviously because of the COVID pandemic, some of these events, or really all the events, have mostly been canceled. So this events committee is now meeting again, has reviewed the site plan submitted by JCDAs. Our departments, traffic, police, public works, transit, and even the library have found the closures to be appropriate. And to ensure public safety, we recommend the board of commissioners approve these row closures. Access to the public library and ResNet Bank parking lots will remain open on Miller Street and King Street for business. So welcome. And if there's anything you'd like to add on the request, please do so.
I just wanted to thank the city for the consideration of this soft closure. It is mainly for pedestrian safety and also emergency access if needed. And later on, I'll discuss a little bit more about the event. But for the street closure, that is all that we request.
And if the library approved, that means she has no overdue books.
That is correct.
Mayor, a move for approval.
We have a motion to approve the street closures.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Murphy. We're ready to call the roll, clearly.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
And Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Since you're up here, you may as well just, you have, I guess, it relates to the occasion license as well. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
We may as well just do yours first. And we have considered approval of seven temporary occasion license for downtown Johnson City Foundation, the business as Connect Downtown Johnson City. And this item is to consider the approval of seven temporary occasion license for downtown Johnson City Foundation, doing business as Connect Downtown Johnson City to a 7 North Boone Street to serve beer Fridays after 5 events to be held at the King Commons Amphitheater on the following dates, which I'll repeat again, June 4th, June 11th, June 23rd, July 30th, August 6th, September 17th, and September 24th. Valid server permits and site plans for location have been submitted with the application. A report has been received from the legal department finding no disqualifying factors. And with that in mind, the staff recommends approval.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Do you have anything you wish to add before we do our thing?
I just want to say, on behalf of Connect Downtown Johnson City, thanks for allowing events to happen in our district again. I know that our community is ready for this to happen, and I think they're eager to get out and about and support different events and nonprofits in the district. And we're happy to do that with Fridays after 5.
And Lindsay, if I could respond to that, too. First of all, I think you're all moving from Founders Park over to King Commons is really a smart move for a couple of reasons. One, the crowds can spread out more, and it's designed for concerts as well. And then we have the playground there. So when families come down with their children, they can play for a while until the music starts, I guess. So I think it's a good, smart move and a way to begin to fully utilize King Commons, which is a great place. And to your point about events starting back, I really hope the city can work as hard as possible to help get these events back on their feet. I did note that one of our kind of stable downtown mile road races has moved to Kingsport. And I'm going to find out why. But we need to make it as easy as possible for our events to get off the ground again.
Well, with that in mind, Commissioner, I wasn't going to mention it, but we actually have hired an individual last year to prepare for this season, which we hope was coming sooner, but is here. And Andy Heiser here of our staff is working very closely with all events in the city and Parks and Recreation for their events, and working with the CBB, JCDAs, the Chamber, and anybody else. So we're glad to have them, and I think we're working toward that endeavor.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we need a motion on the, thank you. And the second, we'll call the roll.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you Friday night.
And the other item is a beer license application from Publix of Tennessee, doing business as Publix Store Number 1633 at 509 North State of Franklin Road, Suite 20, Johnson City. They're opening, I believe, around the 16th of June, but I'll clarify that if I'm inaccurate on that. This item is for consideration of a Class II off-premise beer license for Publix Tennessee, and business as Publix Number 633. Address already stated the business is in the B4 zone. A report has been received from legal, finding no disqualifying factors. The applicant has been informed of the various rules, regulations, and policies, and they are here tonight to answer any questions you might have.
We're just happy you're going to be here.
I know it's been a long time coming. I think it's before my time in this role as district manager for Publix Street Market, he would be the store manager of those places. I believe it started about four years ago. So we're finally here. June 16th is the correct date.
Okay, good.
And we'll be ready to go on that date to serve the citizens of Johnson City.
Well, welcome to Johnson City. Are you new to our city?
Relatively. I moved to Jonesboro, and I came up here to work at the Greenble Publix.
Okay.
I got to tell you, it is beautiful up here.
We think so.
It's just a gorgeous area. I could imagine living anywhere else.
That's great. And we're glad we have two working red lights now on either side of your
Yes.
Mayor Wise?
Yes.
And I know you will be prepared, but I have employees of mine that are going to be waiting at the door at 6:45 when you cut the ribbon to get in. So I hope you really are prepared, because they're happy you're going to be here.
You're cutting the ribbon at 6:45 in the morning?
Yes, we are. Are they really?
Can you share with us and the public, since you're on TV, what are some of the unique features that Publix is going to bring to our area?
As far as the venues that we have?
Well, yeah. I mean, you'll have a deli and all the different...
Actually, one unique thing that we will have there that a lot of the other Publixes don't have is going to be centralized online pickup or centralized order pickup. So all that, if you order a cake, if you order a sandwich, it's actually, you don't have to go to that department. You actually go into the customer service counter, and it's all right there when you first walk into the store.
Nice.
Of course, we have our traditional bakery, our traditional deli, our produce meat department, and dry grocery department, with now the inclusion of alcohol. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Was there a vote on that? I missed it.
We voted.
Did you? I missed it. Okay, next item is the consent agenda for you in consideration.
Start, I guess, at my left. Commissioner Hunter, do you have anything you wish to pull for consideration?
7.3.1.
7.3.1. All right. Commissioner Brock?
Yes, I'd like to pull 7.1.4.
Thanks, Mayor. That's what I was going to pull, so we're good.
Okay. And Commissioner Murphy?
Ditto.
All right. So we have two. I guess we'll do them in the order they appear in the agenda. This is the consider approval of a contract with SNME regarding Innovation Park. So...
We have Phil Pinzol here. I think he'd like to talk about that specific contract on SNME.
And I think we have Hank Carr from the PBA.
Do have Hank here, too, as well.
I'd like for him to give an overview of that project would be great.
Sure.
He's going to beat the PowerPoint.
Do you come up, too?
He barely wants one.
So I just want to make Hank Carr, 3326 Bondwood Circle, thank you. Pleasure to be here. I just want to make, mention that the little preview we had a minute ago, I'm afraid I'm the only guy in the room that went to see Bob Hope and Elvis. That's embarrassing, but I was there.
Were you at Sesame Street Live?
Really little.
Did you go to Sesame Street Live, too?
Don't remember that one. That was a pretty cool review.
That was good.
So, yeah, so overview of Innovation Park, but I'm going to connect some dots and take three minutes. Being born and raised here, gone for 20 years, come back here in 98, got a chance to be involved in the med tech corridor planning. I mean, that's not something you see very much in big cities. I was the luckiest guy walking and got a chance to participate in Millennium, sorry, Millennium Park, Innovation Park, master planning process early on, and Med Tech Park. And they were all fairly well thought out at the time. I got a chance to participate in Med Tech Park from the beginning to the end, close out 10 years later. And it's a success. There's still a little bit of land, but for the most part, there's not much left out Innovation Park hasn't moved along nearly as fast. Millennium Park did exceptionally well under the leadership of the Public Building Authority. They were asked to take that project on and champion it from the very beginning. And I was privileged to be able to serve on that board, and it was a lot of fun for, I think I was there seven or eight years through that process. But Millennium, or sorry, Innovation Park has just never gotten the momentum behind it the other ones did. And there's reasons for it. You know, we could go on for a long time about the ownership structure and how it got created. But the bottom line is, it's 60 acres of land sitting in the heart of your business district, probably the most important. And it just hasn't ever been given the proper time, attention, and funding to get it going. So, of course, Lark Street gets finished, Millennium, sorry, yeah, Millennium Center gets finished, PBA needs an assignment. The city was kind enough to assign that project to the PBA. They've allowed us as a realty trust group, as a company, to come in and help them carry this forward. The city did an RFQ process. We responded, along with SNME, which is what's in front of you today, in a very comprehensive plan that takes it from master planning, well, it really takes it from operation of the PBA, everything that goes on there day to day, through the whole leadership of the PBA board process, the master planning process of the park to include your input, the board, the PBA's input, the university's input, all the stakeholders, and there's a few others out there. That's a piece to that puzzle that's complicated, and to do some schematic design work. And once we get through this first phase, and Phil's been very involved in that leadership process, we're going to be able to come back to you with a design and a price that everyone's going to be pretty comfortable with and go, yep, this is what we want to spend our money on. And at that point, we'll go off and complete the design and bid a project and build a project and deliver a fully completed Innovation Park project. So what you have in front of you tonight is really the mechanical part of it, the technical part from SNME. Our role as realty trust group will be contracted directly with the PBA, because it's really operational in nature and management. It's more of an owner's representative arrangement. So that's a high overview of where we're at. I guess I'd leave you with this from my perspective. I'd like to see this project done. I'd like to see it finished. And we got a good handle on what it's going to take, but it will not be simple because of the history, the ownership structure, you've got state land involved next door, you're going to cross over. Anyway, just a lot of challenges. I'll answer any questions you got.
What's a grand vision for our 30 acres there? What's the benefit to the citizens of Johnson City?
Sure.
Of this development?
So I'll challenge you not to think in terms of 30 acres. You have to design it with the whole 60, if not really the 70, some that includes the university's land next door, because the roads and everything, the stormwater that comes with all that. But when you talk about the vision for your property, that's what we'll determine in the master planning, visioning process. As I sit here today, 30 acres is not a lot of land in the grand scheme of things. I would tell you, it's probably the largest single tract of land you have inside the city limits of Johnson City of that quality and caliber. There's nothing else that I know of that's contiguous. When you think about it, the beauty of this project is it needs to make money to pay back for the roads, but it doesn't have to make money if there's enough jobs that get created with the companies that come to it. But to use a term that I learned years in the economic development business, you can't sell out of an empty wagon. You need to have the roads and all the pieces and parts in place if you're going to sell something in the economic development world. It's just a lot more helpful. So when I think of the vision, it's going to support the university's educational system. From a technology perspective, it's certainly going to support the healthcare perspective, although I think we have enough healthcare land. I don't think that's, I don't see that, okay? But I think the city manager has visions for this to be locations for startup companies. And that may be true if you're willing to give the land away and make some deals for some people. So I think we got to get, we got to start solving some of the problems and figure out who the users can be, and we'll bring them back to you. But the great part is, when I moved back here now 22 years ago, there's not another city that I know of, of 65,000 or 70,000 people, that's had a vision for a med tech park, a millennium park, and an innovation park, and done it. And you've done almost all of it, and I'm excited to be a part of the finish. Any questions?
And you may not know the answer, but for youngsters like Commissioner Murphy and myself, we really don't know. So Innovation Park, when was this kind of identified and developed, and how did that come about?
Yeah, the planning started before I came back in 1998. The master plan, the original master plan for Innovation Park was crafted in 2003 by Hammer, sorry, by McCarty-Holtz-Happel-McCartee. And it was done as part of Third Pete, you know, that three-anchor med tech corridor. There was a big med tech corridor study done by a company called Hammer Solid George. And that's kind of where I entered in. That was in 98 and 99. That was a John Campbell City Commission-led effort. And then you had three different master plans come out of that for med tech park, innovation park, and Millennium Center, Millennium Park. So it was put on paper in 2003. It's been looked at a couple of times since then by the university, but it got caught up in a complex ownership issue. I don't know what years, in 2005, 2006, somewhere in that range. I don't remember exactly. And nothing's happened really since then. The university's done some things there, and they did some things out of need and, you know, and had to act quickly on some things. Hindsight, we would like to have done things differently. We would like to have had a plan for all of it and thought through. We can still salvage most of the plan, but it's not going to be exactly like we envisioned in 2003. And to be honest, the guidelines that were established in 2003, those, all the design guidelines, everything has to get revisited. There's, just like med tech park and millennium park, there are extensive design guidelines of what buildings could look like and everything. So...
Thank you.
You know, for the benefit of the public, to identify where this is, it's west of Chick-fil-A, close to the hospital, and where the old guard armor used to be.
Yeah, National Guard armor.
And all the way back through West Wallen Street.
And there's a cemetery there. I think this is where the old, the cabin, it's out at Wing Deer now. Who was it? Sorry, who?
Young.
The Young Cabin was there. And there's some very historical graves on the site that'll have to be protected and worked around. And there's a lot of history there.
Good.
Are there other questions for Mr. Carr?
Thank you, Hank.
Thank you.
Glad to be working on it.
Are there other questions on that topic?
Is Phil...
Are there other questions that still need to be answered?
I think so.
All right. The next item on the agenda that had been pulled was 731...
Yeah. And I guess, Charlie, you're probably the man to speak on it.
I am, yeah.
So, you know, that's obviously a much-needed project that needs to be put into place. And I think the turf has met its timeline.
Yes, our engineer architects identified this turf in general, I'm no expert on it, but 12 to 15 years, you're at your useful maximum life. This is entering its 12th year. We constructed the stadium in 2010 and replaced it then. And just to tell you the process that we went through here, we retained CHA Sports, I call them, who designed the original stadium, and asked them to look at replacing, coordinating the process to replace this turf, because we originally had some initial quotes to replace it, about $650,000. And, you know, we could go through a state contract, which we always can do on most capital projects, equipment projects. That was still being quoted at the time, five something, 500-something thousand. He felt that if we bid it out, we could do better, providing we, you know, identify what we want. And he worked with Keith Turner at Athletics and identified not just what we had before, but what can we improve upon. And as you can see from the bids, that all met bid specifications. The lowest responsible bidder was Sprint Turf for a total of $428,035. The ad alternate that's mentioned there, you said, what's that? We put an enhancement in there at the request of Athletic Director Turner. As you know, AstroTurf or FieldTurf, I should say, AstroTurf's a brand name, but FieldTurf in general can be very hot. It kind of heats up, and we had a few graduations outside there that people said, hey, it's quite a steamer out there on the field. And not to say it totally solves every problem, but this cooling turf, if you will, is intended to help minimize some heating conditions on the field, make it more tolerable for those that are playing, even though obviously football and soccer are hot sports, particularly in the sun. But this enhancement has been included. We support that recommendation. And you can see from the timeline that was presented, you know, obviously, you'd like to have this done in a couple of weeks, but you're removing the old turf, you are installing new turf, and it's about 60-day timeframe. The good news is that initially, when we built this field or reconstructed this field, you installed a lot of drainage systems in there for the artificial turf. This is not necessary now. There may be a few tweaking of some drainage lines, but you're not going to have a comprehensive rebuild. So this is a complete job, and it is a 60-day timeframe. And if you approve this tonight, we will issue a notice to proceed tonight. So it's not going to even be, we're ready to fire it out tonight. And at O'Hare, CHA is waiting for my communication, should you approve this.
And will that cause any issues with people wanting to use the track during the summer?
It could, to be frank about it. When this project goes, I mean, you will have folks in and out that field, so programming or informal use could be affected. Mr. Turner's aware of that. We are willing and able to provide alternative sites for these folks. So we feel that a little bit of temporary adjustment will still be okay, considering the product will be ready and able to go.
So barring any unexpected issues, we should be ready for football and into July?
We've been told so. That was what we've asked specifically, and that's why I asked them to provide the schedule for your review.
Appreciate it.
Are there other questions on that item? I know we were trying to have it finished before football first practices started, which is like the second week of July, because Dead Week is the end of June, the first week of July, and I don't think they're going to be able to do it because of the start they're getting. So they'll have to practice some other places before that.
Yeah, that certainly was a hopeful goal. Certainly was communicated to all, I think, when the bidders came back and presented their timeframes. That apparently was a desirable goal among us, but not really a realistic one from a production installation perspective.
You know, I think this project, what was the opening date, 2010?
2010.
2010, yeah. Was just a major win for not only our school system, but for the city who built the stadium, who funded the stadium. And now we're at a place where we're having to replace some of the items. And last year, we replaced the Videotron and...
Two years from now, the track is what will be the only...
Upgraded that. But the thousands and thousands of students, family members, and spectators who have been in that stadium has really shone Johnson City in a beautiful light. And when you sit on the home side, just as the sun is setting, and you see the view from there, the mountains that you can see from that stadium, it's just a beautiful addition to not only our city, but a great support system for our school system.
I think one of the reasons why it got used up more probably than most other fields is because of the use that it got with soccer, with football, ETSU playing there for a couple of years, their home games. I mean, there were things that happened that we were able to let other people use it because we had it available, but it has worn out, I can tell you. And it'll be nice to have a little cooler when you're standing there in August at a football game on the sideline. It's pretty warm. So it'd be nice if it's a little cooler with that.
I hope so.
Yeah.
It's good they're able to make the turf more like grass that way.
Yeah. So there's nothing further on that item? Is there action on the consent agenda? Move for approval? We have a motion and a second. If there's not objection, Mr. Jennings, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Plus Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Commissioners, that brings us to ordinances on first reading. We have an ordinance...
It's good they're able to make the turf more like grass that way.
Yeah.
So there's nothing further on that item? Is there action on the consent agenda? Move for approval? We have a motion and a second. If there's not objection, Ms. Jennings, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Mayor Weiss?
Yes. Mayor Commissioners, that brings us to ordinances. On first reading, we have ordinance number 4770-21, first reading, and it is a public hearing. Consider approval of an ordinance to adopt the bridge plan as adopted, certified, and transmitted to you by the Regional Planning Commission. And I believe we have Preston Mitchell, Development Services Director, here to expound upon that and answer any questions as well.
Apologies for the, we got run into a little bit of a traffic jam there coming in. Thank you, Mr. Stahl. Mayor Commissioners, pleased to present to you the bridge plan, but I'm not the one who's going to be giving the bridge plan presentation. I'm excited that Kelly Duggan, who is our planning consultant, she is one of two planning consultants that we have, that has been helping us since fall of last year. Mr. Matt Manley, as you know, really kicked off this project with the Planning Commission. And when Mr. Manley departed to go to North Carolina, Ms. Duggan stepped in. And not only did she step in, but she brought with her a significant amount of graphic design expertise, really. And so it wasn't just completing the bridge plan with the Planning Commission, it was also designing the document into something that far exceeded all of our expectations. And so with that, I'll hush and turn it over to Ms. Duggan.
Thank you, Preston, and thank you all. Very excited to present this to you. As Preston mentioned, it's been several months that we've been working on this. And let's see, did you say Ctrl-L?
Ctrl-L, yes. Can we do it quick?
Thank you. And working super closely with, thank you, with the Planning Commission, as well as with the Long Range Planning Division Committee. Yeah. Let's see, it just made it a... Let me see if I can open this as a... There we go. Okay. No. Great. Okay. So just to let you know what we wanted to share with you tonight, in your packet, you should have gotten a link to the PDF. It's a 127-page document, so we don't expect that you've read it cover to cover. So we just wanted to summarize the main modifications. So first, we just want to give you a little introduction, talk about how we got here, what the process was like. Second, to talk about the elements, what they are. You can think of the elements of a comprehensive plan as sort of categories of interventions that the city can take in the public interest. So things like public facilities, historic preservation, downtown revitalization, those types of things. And then next, we're going to talk about what has changed specifically in those elements, and finally, the next steps. So over the course of last year, Johnson City's Development Services Department organized and led a review of the Johnson City 2020 Comprehensive Plan. For those of you not familiar, the plan was a 20-year plan that essentially ended in the year 2020. So it was time to revisit it. And normally, you would embark on a new comprehensive planning process. But we opted to do this bridge plan, which is a transition document, essentially. You know, 2020 is a census year, so we know that we'll have lots of good data when that's available to us. And so the idea was to create a transitional document that will bridge the gap between this plan and the next plan. So again, it's essentially a five-year extension. And it really focuses on the recommendations section of the comprehensive plan. And the final product, what you all have before you, is a compilation of these recommendations from the various elements. And the intent, again, was to take a fresh look at that original document in order to ensure its relevance and effectiveness going forward, to make sure that it continues to provide guidance for decision-makers for this additional five-year period. This is an example of what one of the working documents looked like. So we had just a simple Word document with all of the text carried forward. And Mr. Manley actually created this color coding system where we determined, you know, what was already implemented and therefore no longer needed to carry forward, what was not implemented but no longer relevant for one reason or another, and then where we needed to have some new language. The 2020 plan is a really well-written document, and I would say the majority of it is still highly relevant for today. But as I mentioned with the new data that we'll be getting from the 2020 census, it felt best to simply extend it, make sure that it's relevant, make sure that it's updated, and then embark on a new comprehensive planning endeavor in the year 2025. And as I mentioned earlier, this was conducted with the Planning Division staff and the Long Range Planning Committee of the Regional Planning Commission, along with more than a dozen partner organizations. So just to summarize what was changed, within each element, there are three main aspects. The first are the goals and objectives. So those were not touched. We felt like that was beyond the scope of what we were doing to change any of the goals and objectives that had gone through a public process and lots of scrutiny before. Those goals and objectives then create policies, and no substantive changes were made here. There were grammatical things that were changed, there were dates that were updated, technical things, nothing of any sort of substantive matter. And then the actions, these are where most of the modifications were made. Also wanted to include this, this is page six of the plan, and it is a document where we looked at the existing Johnson City strategic plan and the bridge plan. And we looked at those elements of the strategic plan to make sure that the changes we were making to the comprehensive plan were in alignment with those goals of the strategic So just, we're going to quickly go through the elements, let you know what they are and the major changes. The first is the urban growth and services element. This is essentially all about, you know, how do we grow thoughtfully as a city? The main change here was the introduction of urban neighborhood zoning to promote infill. So this is for Johnson City's neighborhoods that were built prior to the year 1960 and have a more traditional urban form. They're a little bit denser, they may have a grid-street pattern, you may have reduced setbacks, those types of things, where the traditional residential zoning just doesn't take into account. Next, we have the land use element. This is essentially considering how we regulate the use of land in an orderly and ethical way. The urban residential zoning that I mentioned before was part of the changes, some recommended zoning code changes, the idea of traditional urban form, as I mentioned before. And we updated the glossary of terms, and also just supporting efforts to make Johnson City a destination for outdoor recreation, to continue to do so. Next, we have the transportation element, and there are four sub-plans within that: sidewalks, major thoroughfare, public transit, and bikeway greenway. The main changes were recommendations for the development of a fee system that would allow for resident-requested sidewalk projects, the creation of a catalog of existing substandard streets, opportunities for road diets, identifying those, and the creation of a bicycle greenway master plan. Next, we have the economic development section. And this is obviously about just enhancing prosperity and quality of life for Johnson City's residents. There were a lot of boards and groups referenced from 20 years ago that no longer exist, so they were removed. There were a lot of new boards and groups that were added, you know, recommendations to direct resources towards locally-owned businesses, and support of the efforts of the convention and Visitors Bureau.
Can you give a little definition of traffic tourism that's new to me?
Yes, traffic tourism is essentially any type of event that involves a vehicle, so like racetracks or, you know, racing, that type of thing. Any kind of draw of people from outside Johnson City. Next, we have housing. And obviously, the goal here is just to provide an adequate supply of diverse housing to meet current and future needs. We added recommendations to that properties that are set for tax auction, that they be offered up to housing agencies as a first option, cooperation between developers and housing agencies in the development of affordable housing, walkability within neighborhoods, and then just some zoning amendments to reduce confusion in terms of housing types. Community facilities, there was, again, like with most of the elements, the removal of action items that have already been implemented, greater protection for riparian corridors, prioritization and protection of ridge lines and creeks, and also the expansion of neighborhood-scale parks in underserved areas. Downtown revitalization, this is, one thing that was, this has actually already been amended in the zoning code, but we just wanted to make it consistent in the plan, was the provision for first-floor residential uses. Previously, that was not allowed. There was an effort to promote only commercial uses on the ground floor, and with, you know, best practices in planning, much more mixed-use type of environments are definitely a best practice. So we wanted to make sure that the plan was consistent with that. The encouragement of grocers or small markets to locate downtown, improved pedestrian access to parking facilities, alignment with the small cell antenna ordinance, and promoting public art and preservation of brick streets. And then finally, there is the historic preservation element. The main changes here were simply to just encourage greater public awareness of the historic resources that exist in Johnson City, and to encourage events to increase that public awareness. The historic preservation in Johnson City is very, very strong. So the focus was to make sure the public is aware of why. You know, the city deems this as something that is worthy of its resources. So the next steps are, I've copied just the section from state law that puts it in your purview to adopt the comprehensive plan by ordinance. This was reviewed and adopted by the Planning Commission at its February meeting. And then the next step is for the legislative body to hold a public hearing, which is what we're doing today, and to adopt it by ordinance. And I did just want to, for the public, or anyone who hasn't had a chance, to look at the plan itself, it's a much more easy-to-navigate document. The website is jcbridgeplan.com. So you can scroll through it over here by the table of contents. Each element has its own summary sheet, so if you don't want to read through the entire thing, you have a summary of the topics and the modifications. You can thumb through it. There's also, you know, you can click over here, you can also click from the table of contents. You can print the document from here, you can download it from here. So if the public is interested, that's where they would access it, jcbridgeplan.com. And then from here, unless you all have any questions, I just wanted to turn it over to Chris Dagenhart, who has been just so invaluable to me throughout this process. And I've worked with a lot of planning commissions, and I've not met one quite as engaged as your planning commission. And that's a big part due to Chris. So I wanted to turn it over to him.
Thank you, Kelly.
On behalf of the commission, I want to thank Kelly, Preston, and Matt Manley for their amazing leadership and continuous attention to detail, very good work. And I would just tell you, there's been a reawakening in the Planning Commission of the potential and the impact of good planning and good communication of that planning. And I think this document presents that. So representing the commission that brings us to you, we would appreciate your consideration. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I certainly do have a comment. And as you all know, I went back to the Planning Commission as the commission representative. Unfortunately, I've missed a couple of meetings already, and I apologize for that. But the dedication of the planning commissioners and the hard work that they are doing is very, very impressive. I think as a part of this bridge plan, the fact that you all mapped that to the city's strategic plan is very strong. And what I saw more than anything was verification, validation, that we're on the right track because, you know, you had one happening over here and one happening over here, and lo and behold, they kind of came together with these same elements. And I think with the focus on those, that we can really make a huge difference now that we have purpose and a roadmap, a blueprint to go by. So Chris, I want to thank you, because I know you've shown a lot of leadership in the bridge plan, and Dr. Wild, and all of staff who have really produced this incredible document. And I really do want to encourage the public to go to the website and find it and go through it. I think you'll be extremely impressed. And so, thanks again. And it's going to be exciting to see when we look at this again, some months and years later, about all those accomplishments that you were able to identify from 2010. And another group of people are going to be looking back at this and say, "You know what? They really had their act together." So I'm very proud of them, and thank you a lot.
Thank you.
I will move for approval on first reading.
I've got a question.
We have a motion?
He's got a question.
Sorry.
Before we make any motions in that manner, we would ask that you please open the public hearing. State law does require that we noticed in the newspaper 30 days in advance of today, so we did that. It is true that normally your public hearings are held on second reading, but because of the statutory requirements, public hearing is opened on first reading. I know sometimes the mayor likes to carry public hearings through the readings if...
That's when we're on Zoom.
Okay, well, it's certainly up to the commission, but we presume that the paper will, we hope that there would be some coverage of this today. And so if the commission so chose, definitely need to open the public hearing today, but if you chose to carry it through the other readings, you could certainly do that. But thank you.
So there are two more readings after this?
There do need to be. And that's per your charter, that for any ordinance, you have three readings. It's just that for this particular one, state law says you have to open the public hearing on the first.
So I will open the public hearing. For anyone wishing to address the commission about the bridge plan. So you scared them off, Preston. They were all going to say something.
It's not personal.
Okay. So since, I would be inclined to leave the public hearing open into second reading if there's not objection.
Commonly, do second reading.
Right. And so with that, I guess we would need a motion. So we'll leave public hearing open, but we can go ahead and act on first reading if there's a motion.
Todd, and I'll second Todd's.
Do you have a motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And a second from Commissioner Hunter.
He answered it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was about how many readings.
Is there objection to calling the roll? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Mayor Weiss?
Yes.
All right.
Okay. That brings us to item other on the agenda. We have a consider approval to file a fiscal year 2021, '22 Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, to the Tennessee Housing Development Agency in the amount of $161,250. Is that yours, too?
It is. Yeah, I was actually hoping that Mr. Freeman, Stephen Freeman from Johnson City Housing Authority, was going to be here. He might have gotten held up. But, so if you would, allow me just to make a couple of remarks. This is our annual report to you and update to the action plan regarding community development funds that we obviously receive through HUD or through THDA. And if you would allow me, because I know there are two items here, I'll just speak, just combine it into one here. But starting with ESG, this is obviously our Emergency Solutions Grant funding that comes to us from THDA. As you can see there in the report, what has been provided, or what is being budgeted this year is $161,250. this year is $161,250, of which $150,000 of that's being divided between two agencies. I will say that the question was asked of me from another member of the administration, and it was a great question. Typically, we see Salvation Army in the ESG budget. In this particular year, you see that you don't. We don't have any particular reason as to why they did not. The only thing I can, and this is just me guessing, serving on the Community Development Board with that group, is that they, they received $12,000 from last year, or as part of this current year budget that we're in. As of January of this year, they had spent a third of that $12,000, which is, that's, that's, not that that's unusual, but there was that. And then the other is, they were, they were probably the largest recipient of our CDBG CARES money for round one. They received roughly $117,000 as part of the CDBG CARES Act or CARES Round One funding. So, could be that they have some resource shifting going on, but they, they did not submit application for ESG for FY '22. In terms of CDBG and home, that information has been provided to you as well. Total budget for FY '22 is $703,000. The Community Development Board met, received presentations from those agencies, those being ASP, Apology Service Project, FTDD, Eastern Eight, and Habitat for Humanity. I want to brag on our community development corporations here for a moment, because having come from a community that only had one CDC, and that one CDC, not only did they administer all the CDBG funds, but they were the, they were the only game in town when it came to housing rehab or, or new construction. The fact that we have multiple CDC agencies in our area providing housing rehabilitation and new construction is phenomenal. And then not only that, but the fact that they choose to work together to provide these services is even, is even greater. And so, when we asked for these agencies to come and present their budget requests, they actually went one step forward and had coordinated before even coming to the Community Development Board and had presented all of their figures in a spreadsheet that showed what they're, how they were able to use these dollars in the most effective way and in a coordinated fashion. It was just really impressive and really, really proud of those groups and happy to be working with them. So, with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you. So, the first item is 9.1. Mr. Tall, do you want to read that or...
Yes. It's a consider approval to file a fiscal year 2021, 2021, '22 Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, to the Tennessee Housing Development Agency in the amount of $161,250. Staff recommends that the commission approve filing of this grant program through the Tennessee Housing Development Agency in the amount stated.
Is there a motion?
Well, I was just going to, for general public clarification, because I think we're familiar with it, but Preston, more specifically, these funds and these facilities that are constructed are meant and identified for low-income and homeless populations, correct?
That is correct. Now, on, on this particular item you're on right now, which is on ESG, this is specifically for assistance for the homeless population. But for the next item, for CDBG, you are, you are right on the money, that it is, it is specifically for low-income and affordable housing and for, for folks who typically fall within what's called VLI, very low income, which is, could be 30% of AMI or area median income. And then this, this housing does range all the way up to, in certain circumstances, 80 to 100% AMI, but generally falls in that 30 to 80% AMI.
And I also am glad to hear about the cohesive unified effort. You know, I think this commission specifically has taken great efforts in communicating our desire that entities work together towards united goals. And, and it's, it's great to hear that that is bleeding through the community.
Absolutely. And the leadership of those organizations from Melissa Miller with ASP and Laura Kelly with Habitat Now, she's the new executive director at Habitat, and Sherry Trent, those three ladies working together, bringing their agencies in, in working directly with Bill Forrester at First Tennessee. It's just, just great to be a part of that group.
And I just want to recognize how many initials you have managed to use in your presentation. I mean, I think you take the...
He went to Sesame Street Show at Pringle Hall.
I think there were two dozen. Yeah. That was a really impressive use of initials. Whole sentence is made of nothing but initials. So, are there other questions for Preston?
So, just for clarification on the first one, 9.1, that we're going to be voting on first, this, this is a grant, originates federally through the state?
Originates federally, but federally, but it is funded through THDA and Tennessee Housing Development.
Right, right.
And, and then those ESG, which are the Emergency Solution Grant Funds, come from THDA, and they are routed through us. And then our administrator is Johnson City Housing Authority.
Okay. And, but the awards are going to go to two, to nonprofits.
Correct.
Frontier Health.
Yes, ma'am.
Who, for the Safe House for Domestic Violence Shelter.
Yes, ma'am.
For, for those victims. And then Fairview Housing.
Correct.
And so, they will actually be the administrators of this funds out into the, into the community to support the homeless group.
Right. Each one is roughly 70-something thousand.
Right.
And yes, both of those agencies do tremendous work in not only finding temporary housing for our homeless, but also work in the shelters, and then also everything from food packs to care packs to medical assistance and even mental health assistance.
Move for approval?
Have a motion?
This is on 9-1 or 9-1?
9-1. We have a motion in a second. If there's not objection, we'll call the roll.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Next item has been consider approval of the fiscal year 2021, '22 Annual Action Plan to file with the Housing and Urban Development HUD.
You're going to have to work harder than that.
I do. And the community development staff recommends approval of the 2021, '22 Annual Action Plan.
Preston? Anything to add to that?
No, sir.
Any questions?
I do. I have a question. I, I think we all know most of these organizations who have come and made the presentations. During their presentations have, have, did the board kind of map where these funds were going to be spent in our city? One of the discussion items that I've brought up numerous times is that, for, for example, in, in the Langston neighborhood, we use CDBG funds to really create some improvements that are really creating a spark in that neighborhood. And because we focused and we zeroed in on a community using some of these funds, what I'm seeing here is that they may be used over here, and they may be used over here. And we've kind of lost that synergy of make some dramatic improvements in some of our neighborhoods that really, really need some assistance and help. So, as they presented these, do you know where these rehabs are going to take place? Or have they identified who's going to be eligible? Or will they go out with applications coming up soon? Or I, I, just personally, I feel like we're, we're losing some opportunity where we can make a significant difference.
Right. No, I'm actually excited to be able to answer that in, in, in two ways. First, when they gave their presentations, they indicated, all the agencies indicated that, and especially because of what happened with COVID, they have a very serious backlog, a, a list of clients that are waiting. And so, all of those agencies are not going to need to go out and shop these dollars. They, they, they have a backlog of, of clients needing for either rehab work, and that could be anything from roofing repairs to HVAC repairs or other more significant high-dollar repairs, all the way up to new construction. And those funds for kind of your typical annual funds, the $703,000, which is really, it's actually 540-something for FY '22, and then we have the 160 carryover. And so, that's, that's the, the annual plan. And again, they have a, a list of individuals, especially because of what's happened recently. But the part two answer that I'm excited about, that we are really still cooking this thing in the kitchen here and have yet to bring it to you. And I don't want to speak in, in advance of, of Mr. Peterson, because he and I have been working on this at a very preliminary level. But I'm, I'm glad you mentioned the Langston neighborhood, because you're exactly right with the improvements that have been made to the Langston Center, and then of course, all of the infrastructure improvements, that being the reconstruction of Welburn Street, and then all the sidewalk improvements that Mr. Pennzall has done out there. And that's, those have been through CDBG dollars from this year's budget. We've identified, the staff as well as our agencies have identified a number of potential opportunities for new construction or rehab in that neighborhood. And so, I want to, I kind of don't want to go any further than that right now, but we're exploring those opportunities. And what we would really like to do is, the CDBG CARES Act Round Two dollars have already come to us, and that's roughly 522,000. The way that those dollars were programmed or, or have been, the parameters on that is that we have to update the action plan by August of this year, and then we have two years to spend those, those funds. And that's specifically the 522 of CDBG CARES Act Round Two dollars. What we would like to do is for you to consider the action plan for the typical year, and that's what you're doing tonight. And then what we would like to do is bring to you an updated action plan in August, or even July, if we can get it together, for that 522,000 that would be specifically dedicated towards this neighborhood and with some things that we're working on and some areas that I've been working with Mr. Peterson on. And so, I'm, I'm real excited that you asked that question, because it'll be two different pots of money working towards that.
Let me suggest a third pot.
Sure.
And I don't know if you know Jeff Dykes from, from Bright Ridge.
Right.
But they have a program that is half-funded by TBA, and Bright Ridge funds the other half, and it's, it's larger than this pot. And it's all for energy efficiency, weatherization, improvements to, to homes, including replacement of HVACs, but it's all for this same income level of homes. And maybe there's some way in some of these homes that they could come in and do those kinds of improvements that would free up money.
Sure.
Of what we'd be paying on a CDBG.
Sure.
And then we could take that excess and apply it to other homes.
That's fantastic.
Because they're looking for those homes as well. And I mean, they'll replace windows, they'll do the HVACs, the weatherizations, all things that would, you know, contribute to a house basically leaking and trying to reduce the energy cost of that house and improve the comfort of that house.
Absolutely.
So, that may be a good, good synergistic thing, that we can really kind of exponentially have monies to make some real significance in the community. But I'll make the introduction if need be.
I'm glad you brought that up, Commissioner Brock, because if you weren't, I was going to bring it up. But yeah, absolutely. I think that'll further the dollars and make a larger impact if y'all can work with, because they just announced that to us last meeting.
Yep.
And so, I think that'd be a great...
The timing of your comment is, is perfect, because like I said, we're preliminary conversations about this, but lot of energy and a lot of excitement. And so, look forward to bringing something to you in July or in August.
Good.
Thank you.
We had a motion in a second. Did we? Or no, we did not? Okay. Motion in a second. Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Have a motion in a second. Any objection? We'll call the roll.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Mayor, that takes us to the item of public input, if there's anybody that wants to come forward and speak.
We do have one that has indicated a desire. And so, before you come, if, if, we'll open public input, come to the podium, give your name and address, and then you'll be afforded three minutes to address the commission. The commission is listening during this time, so there won't necessarily be a response, but immediately to the comments. So, we welcome opening the public input.
Lorraine Merwin Brown, 319 Lamont Street, Johnson City, Tennessee. I've spent six of the last 10 days in the hospital, actually brought by our EMS. In the ER, my nurse told me that he came here for nursing school, and his plan after graduating was to work at the, a hospital in Texas, Boone, or Asheville. He hadn't thought he would stay here, but found he preferred living here and visiting Asheville occasionally to living and working in Asheville. That conversation, while I was in severe pain, somehow got me thinking of the city every time I was awake over the next several days. It gave me something to think about other than my pain, something that I'm passionate about, things that I don't usually have the time to think about. Mostly things I love, but also things that I get frustrated with. And one of the things was the sprawl of city offices, especially in this neighborhood, is staggering. And it is like a cancer, always wanting more and bigger office space. We can use the lessons learned nationally, nationally. I'm sorry. I should have taken a pain pill before I came here. From remote work during the pandemic, not just as working remote or in person, but what is the most productive, most efficient use of space? And what use of space brings out the best in the employees? It would take a year of study. It would involve trying and evaluating changes for every one of the 700 or so employees. It would need leadership from you and every department head and manager. It'll be harder for you than writing a $100,000 check. There is no budget request, but it will take a willingness to lead by our city's upper management. I believe at the end of the year, you would find the city with an excess of resources and a system of organizing as a workplace, which would not lead to these excesses again. Although I do think the physical spaces that the city thinks it needs and maintains is a tremendous drain on our budget, I am in favor of a downtown presence for the city, which might include purchasing half of the old train depot, but only if it does not include any traditional office space. And only if it includes, includes vacating at least as much existing office space. Because you guys, and not just you, but other businesses too, it's easier to add, throw money at it, add more than ever reevaluate. I have some very exciting details about what it could include, but the downtown depot could be the most public example of how innovative our city government can be in their commitment to serve. In 2020, over nine million businesses closed and do not expect to reopen. That represents roughly three out of every 10 businesses in the United States. In 2019, the Inside Small Business Survey revealed that nearly two-thirds of Americans dream of opening a business of their own. Offering five grand to new residents is a fine idea. I thought it was unique and innovative when I first heard of Chattanooga starting their program in 2012. When cities in Vermont, Maine, and Alaska started similar programs, I was less impressed. As more cities adopt this approach, each new addition to the list is less meaningful. The novelty of an idea adds power to its impact. Instead of being the latest in a long string of cities offering cash incentives for remote workers to relocate, let us first demonstrate how we can do better, not by spending more, not by doing without, not by asking employees to work harder, but in having city employees reassess their workplace needs and be creative in personal workplace permanence. Then we can share not only our... Then we can share not only our excesses, but our experience. Then maybe we can think of a new gimmick to be in the news, to be seen. Maybe a raffle of a city building that you find you don't need anymore. That would get you in the news to be the first city to do that. As the country struggles following the COVID pandemic, and we all look to the future, wondering what's next for me, our city has a once in a century opportunity to lead the way, to set the trend, to inspire and to prove that we are a spectacular place to live. Let us be the city that reignites that American dream. Let us be the best city to try your small business idea in. Let us do it by not only helping the people who move here, but also by helping the people that already live here. Let us be the best place for people to make their American dream come true. I do have a number of specific proposals and recommend recommendations.
You're at three minutes.
Okay.
We've got email.
Darn, you've missed the best one.
Well, we've got emails.
Okay. But, okay, that was about the end.
Okay.
And I'm not nervous.
Yeah.
I shouldn't have come so early and sat there so long.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you. I'm sorry you're hurting, but thank you for coming anyway.
Okay, so do you want me to send you the details?
Yes, please. Our emails are on the city website, so.
Yes. I think I need to do it in person. You really want to hear these ideas, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public input? Okay, yes, see someone come on? Yeah, I'll give you just a minute to come on around.
My name is Julius Anderson. I was told that I should come today on behalf. I'm the organizer of the Community Block Party for Children. It was just through this Saturday at University Parkway Baptist Church. And the reason for me throwing it was because it was trying to connect with the kids. Due to everything that's going on on the media with racism, the shootings at schools, all this stuff with children, pretty much. My thing was let the kids come together, eat together. Everything was free, eat together, play together, win prizes together, and just learn to love each other. And the way I spelled community was C-O-M-E, come, be unified, unity. And there's plenty of things that I want to do in my city, you know. Listening to a lot of things that was talked about, I want to help out with the homeless. I have a big heart for homeless, because we don't know how blessed we are to go home every night and just pull a cover over our heads and turn on the heat, turn on the air. We don't know how fortunate that is to us until we're out there in it. So I want to do things in my city. I'm born and raised here. I feed the homeless every chance I can get. They know me as the soup guy or the pizza guy. With the veterans, I feel like they need more than anything. I've seen them out on the streets, asking for cigarettes, asking for change, you know. I feel like they needed, they need to be put up in a condo, something. They fought for the flag. I feel like they need to be respected and put somewhere where they need to be. Addiction, I want to have hands to deal with people that are battling addiction. I might look good in clothes, but I fought addiction for six years. I didn't go to rehab. It took me to go to jail. It took me to pray about it. And I've been clean for thirteen years now. So if I can do it, I want to help somebody else get through it. And from the help of you guys, whatever I can do, I will continue to throw kids functions. I'm putting together one right now. It's kind of hard, money situation, trying to find people to support me, help me out. My hopefully, my next one, I'm trying to do it in August, a movie night in Founders Park. Kids, let's come to the, come to the movie. And just hate to say it, let them eat popcorn, junk food, and do what they want to do together and say it's okay, because racism is taught as a child. And our kids is what we need for our future. You guys passed the torch down to us, our generation. I feel like we should pass the torch to this this generation, because you never know. They might want to be lawyers, doctors, police officers, whatever the case may be. But with the mind that is going on now, what's going on now, I'm trying to break it. I'm trying to break it. We got to, we got to. Our kids is all we have. So I'm Julius Anderson. Nice meeting you guys.
Mr. Anderson, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, thank you.
Thank you for letting me do it. All right. Thank you. Are any other public input? Seeing none, public input is closed. And Mr. Stahl, do you have anything further to report?
But just, you know, obviously, we're going to miss Bobby Shirley. Thank you for honoring her tonight. And just let you know that we we have extended an offer to to fill her position, but we have not received information back if that's been accepted. But it's been a, right now, Freedom Hall, as of her retirement, is is half staffed in full time personnel. So obviously, we have a little little time, but not much time, because we expect the show and event season to really move forward pretty quickly. And we're working in that endeavor to make that happen. But we will miss Bobby, and we certainly recognize her for forty six years of service. We also received information that one of our longtime Parks and Recreation employees, Connie Deegan, whose name was mentioned here briefly tonight, our nature coordinator for the city's Parks Department, is one of fifteen individuals that was recognized by the Tennessee Wildlife Federation at its fifty six annual Conservation Achievement Awards, which was held virtually the other day. And Connie was named Conservation Educator of the Year for outstanding education and educating others, children, adults. She's, if anybody knows her, she loves snakes, loves the outdoors, loves all all types of wildlife, natural settings, been very instrumental, not just at the Keefahfer Farm, which we're trying to develop, hopefully with a master plan defining that purpose in the near future. But she's been involved in Buffalo Mountain, Winged Deer Park, and also Jacob's Nature Park is a special interest of hers as well. So we're going to formally honor her if she's able at the next city commission meeting. So you'll all have an opportunity to recognize her firsthand. But I just wanted to mention that she's, her work is greatly appreciated in our in our park system and the community overall.
Can I make a suggestion? And if you have never been on a hike with Connie Deegan, you've really missed out. And as we enter probably a master planning project with the Keefahfer Farm, to get this commission with Connie to just walk a little bit out on Keefahfer, and you're going to see some things that if you just went on your own, you wouldn't, you would never recognize. But she's a pretty amazing, knowledgeable person. And if we could do that in the next thirty, forty five days, I think everybody would really enjoy it for sure.
So I guess, starting with Commissioner Hunter, any items to report or?
Sure. The Library Board met on Tuesday for their normal meeting and in preparation for our appointments of board and boards and committees for the city. They're actually going to meet again on Saturday, because they had one of the largest application pools that they could recall in history, in their history of work. And I think they attributed a lot of that to the restructuring and making it easier and more accessible for the community at large to figure out what to apply for, when to apply, and to kind of see what they might have interest in. So they were happy as a board to see such interest in applications. And so they'll be making recommendations as to out of that application pool who they would like to see. And that'll come to us after the Saturday meeting. Also was able to attend the Joint Economic Carter County Development Board. I think I got that right, a lot of words there. They also met on Tuesday. And they seemed to, and that was my first time attending. And they seemed to be at initial stages of really creating a plan, kind of like what we did with our strategic plan. And so it was insightful, interesting, and it was great to be so well received as a Johnson City representative. And so I look forward to working with them on that. And then this morning, Science Hill had their seniors awards ceremony. And so I stopped by for that for a little while, and it's great to see the the recognition of our seniors as they graduate. And I think they said over six million in in scholarships were awarded this year. So that's all I got.
Mr. Brock?
Yes, I do have one thing on the Animal Control Board for the animal shelter. A more formal announcement will be made in just the next couple of weeks. But we have an incredibly generous donor who has given money to build a spay neuter clinic at the shelter, fully funded. We have thousands and thousands of pets in Washington County. Over five thousand go through the shelter every year that are unwanted. Many, many litters of puppies and kittens that have no homes. So having a low cost spay neuter clinic that we can spay neuter the the shelter animals, we will do it also for other shelters and rescues. And then low cost for the for the public who qualify will will absolutely make a huge, it will, it will reverse and change the dynamics of just trying to find homes for animals to cutting down on pet population in Washington County. So it's an exciting time. It's not an exciting time to build right now, but we're, but we're marching forward with it. And so sometime next year, we will be open for for that. So it's been a great gift to to the citizens of Johnson City and Washington County, sorry. That's all.
Vice Mayor? Next week, the CBB Planning Group, not the official committee, but those getting ready for the new CBB are actually meeting in person instead of Zoom next week. So excited about that. So next Wednesday, I have an in person meeting, so I'll know more about what's going on then. Need to borrow the Plexiglas? We're actually going to meet in our conference room right here. So I think we'll be spread out enough to do it, so. Commissioner Murphy?
Yes, sir. I was blessed to attend the Carver Recreation Awards and Scholarship Gathering on yesterday. It was a really good, blessed time to see children of homes within our community receive scholarship, scholarships for various reasons. And I believe that Herb Greenlee is doing a phenomenal job, along with his staff. He's been there for years. And whatever we can do to wrap our arms around the family of Carver, let's do that. And we'll make mention that JCDI will be meeting in person tomorrow at eight AM at Memorial Park. So I'm excited about that meeting and talk about the John Sevier Center.
And so I I too would echo the JCDI meeting. Over the last couple of weeks, the commission has spent many hours in budget workshops with both various cities' department heads, but also other quasi-government agencies with whom we partner. I also had an opportunity to meet with a consultant engaged by ETSU last week about plans for developing a management plan for the Martin Center and how they go about opening and utilizing that space. JCDI tomorrow morning. In the next week following, I'll be a guest of Mayor Shoal and Kingsport for the Bays Mountain Day of Celebrations. It's the fiftieth anniversary of Bays Mountain Park. And later that week, attending the Pinnacle Awards, where our CBB is, I understand, to be recognized for some of their efforts. So there is a lot going on, and I thank each one of you. If there's nothing further, the meeting can adjourn.